We'll bring our regular city council meeting to order. It's Monday, November 5th, 2012, 7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require special assistance to participate at this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Fauch?
Here.
Councilmember LeFever?
Here.
Councilmember Crum?
Here.
Next on the agenda is amendments or removals to tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number five is approve the consent agenda. This is the approval of the minutes of the October 22nd, 2012, regular city council meeting. Set date of Monday, November 19th, 2012, at 7:00 PM for our next regular city council meeting. Approved the claims register and cash report. And building permits were approved for Talon Melby.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion?
Randy, I have a question. I have a question on our invoice from Rothenberg on Law Services. And I guess the question I have is, it appears that it's 50 percent itemized, but there's part of it that isn't itemized, as far as, you know, what the purpose of the work was. Excuse me. So I would like to pull this out and ask Attorney Rothenberg if he could go ahead and itemize out the bill so we know exactly what it is we're paying for before we approve The invoice is in the folder here. It's on page two, the top of page two. So as an example, on September 11th of '12, it says receipt and review of email to and from Fauch. If you go to page two, it'll say receipt and review of email to and from client. And it'll say that three or four times. And just my point is, I'd just like to have that more itemized so we know what we're spending our money for.
Okay, are you making a motion then to remove that point from the pay request?
I would, but I think we already have motion number two.
Trying to think here. The right process. I believe that pulling something out is allowed once we're into discussion. And so we have a motion to pull that out in a second, correct? Okay, is there any other discussion on that? Okay. A motion in a second to pull that out from the claims register. Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? I have a motion in a second, so Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Agenda item number six, discuss and approve resolution 12-16. This is a resolution approving the street road use report.
I'll make a motion, we approved the resolution 12-16, street road use report. I'll second it.
City of Logan, resolution number 12-16 pertaining to official municipality report for municipal streets and parking. Whereas the City Council of Logan, Iowa has approved this report for its official 2012 fiscal year street financial report upon motion of Councilmember Johnson and sent by Councilmember Fauch and upon roll call voting, the vote being, that will be filled in after the vote, whereupon the mayor declared this motion carrying this resolution duly adopted, passed this day of November 5th, 2012. Are there any other questions or discussion on this report? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Resolution number 12-16 has been approved. Agenda item number seven, discuss and approve resolution 12-17, a resolution appointing Aaron Rothenberg, city attorney. We have a motion in a second. In the discussion part, I'll explain it if I get a motion in a second. Then if you don't want to approve it, you can vote it down.
Why not get a motion in a second? Well, it's late.
Well, usually you'd have a motion in a second, then you have discussion. And then you can vote it down if you don't want to.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 12-17, a resolution to approve appointment of city attorney to replace Joseph Lotterbach.
I'll second it.
Okay. This came up because earlier this year, we had appointed Mr. Rothenberg our city attorney. And we did not follow the correct procedure according to our ordinances. According to our ordinances, we actually need to do it by resolution. We need to do it stating the dollar amount, and that's the reason we are doing this, so... Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So this goes until we reappoint in January?
Correct.
Okay. And as you appoint a city attorney, how would you characterize that? Are they on retainer, contract? How do we decide if they continue or don't continue?
That's also by resolution. If we put it in a resolution and approve it, they would just continue on at an hourly rate like we've done now, as services are rendered, were built, so...
And if we decide at some point before January of next year not to use our services, then what?
Then we would go out for bids or evaluate or to check references and stuff on someone else and then would point them at the beginning of the year under resolution.
Does the resolution, Randy, do we look similar in January as to this? It seems like in the past, we've just kind of...
The one in January is actually, would actually be a different one. It usually is a resolution where we say that we retain city attorney, we retain all city employees.
Pointing at seven.
Yeah. This one is just due since we had a change in attorneys, so... Any other questions or discussion? Okay, City of Logan, resolution 12-17, a resolution to approve the appointment of city attorney to replace Joseph Lotterbach. Whereas the City of Logan is in need of a city attorney to replace Joseph Lotterbach, the previous city attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Logan appoint Aaron Rothenberg to the position of city attorney at an hourly rate of $150 an hour and travel time at an hourly rate of $50 an hour. This appointment will be renewed at the first meeting in January of each year. I have a motion in a second. Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Resolution number 12-17 has been approved. Agenda item number eight on the agenda, discuss extra pay for Deputy Clerk Marilyn Kaiser. We've mentioned this, she's been on her own since the first part of July. She's been putting in a lot of extra hours. Excuse me, she does receive some extra pay due to the fact that she receives time and a half on her hours worked, but she's had to give up a lot of family time and stuff. And Mike, I don't know, if you want to talk anymore on this, you brought this up, we ought to go ahead and discuss this.
Yeah, Randy, I just think that under the circumstances, since as you said, July time period, Marilyn has been kind of single threaded, single incumbent in the office. I know there's been some folks that's helped her out, but she's put in many countless hours, whether it's been in City Hall, whether it's been probably at home, whether it's been in her sleep, dreaming probably about this, you know, this operation, so... And I know that we have done similar things for the police when they take on additional work and other city workers in extraordinary times. Certainly not something hopefully to go on for a long period of time, but when there's peaks in work, they reward people appropriately. So I just wanted to make that case and say, you know, I would suggest we follow similar protocol to what we've done in the past, our thinking around the police or other city workers in times of like this, that we would be consistent. And I don't exactly remember, you know, how that all worked, but I would propose we'd be consistent.
Yes, I see your point, Mike, and I was going to ask what you had in mind next, and it sounds like you're deferring to past processes. I know when we've done this on a couple of different occasions with the officers, it was because of the salaried nature of their jobs, and more work doesn't mean more pay. Kind of just gets lumped in there with the extra call time and the, you know, the issues with having that lumped onto them as a responsibility with no chance for any extra compensation. As you mentioned, I know certainly no downplaying Marilyn's extra workload that she's been taking on, but I hope that she's been compensated with the overtime and any of those efforts. If that's not happening, if she's doing work at home, I hope that that's being recorded and she's being compensated for that, because that would be a shame if that weren't happening. So I don't know how, we don't have any history that I know of compensating hourly employees that we have, I don't recall.
I don't remember hourly employees also. But we've also usually outdone without an hourly employee this long. Usually when we've had it, say some street department or the water department, usually, you know, within two months, we've filled a position. And same with the police, if we were just going to be out for a month, we wouldn't give them extra pay, but when we're in lengthy periods, that's when we've decided to do that with them. And, you know, I, my thoughts would be, it wouldn't be the same proportion like it was with the police, because you're right, they were, they are salaried, so they don't make overtime when they're working the extra hours. But I guess I think that, you know, with all the great work Marilyn's done, that there would be a small stipend there for her.
I'd be happy to work with Randy and come up with a proposal to bring back to the council meeting next time for discussion and approval. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we're looking for there, having no basis for it and knowing that it'll set somewhat of a precedence going forward in these circumstances. I mean, you know, we can look at them a case by case, but that expectation will have been created. So, yeah, we kind of look forward to that, but that's what I was looking for, which you kind of had in mind.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Mike and I will work on the next couple of weeks then and hopefully bring something back to the next city council meeting on some proposals. Agenda item number nine, discuss swim pool year end finances. Marilyn has a chart there for us.
Can I make a suggestion here? Does it make sense, I forgot to do this when we were approving the agenda, should we move up radarly?
Do you want to do nine and 11 both right now?
And get an overview quickly to get a sense of the year, and then we can go into the finances.
Sorry, when I'm doing agendas, I just put things as my thoughts come up on paper and sometimes don't put them back in the right order.
Check one. How many times in my career have I said check one? Seems like I haven't done this for four years. Don't even need a microphone. Step in the camera here. Just real quick, just so you can see my board, or not my board, the pool board. Vice President Dan Kors, there he is. Kerry Waters was on board and manager, somebody? Tammy's back there. Miss any more? Okay, thanks for coming there. What a fun time, what a fun time with this group. I'm just going to go ahead and read this so everybody can hear it, what we've done over the, it's written right there. First of all, this has been one of the best years we've had since the pool opened. I think having a manager, a manager and assistant manager was a very, on this very active pool board. It helped the pool run as smooth as it did. One of the best things we've learned in this season was the addition of a bath house adult. I gotta get in the camera better here. This left the managers free to take care of business and to be seen a lot more around the pool. With all the new lifeguards this year, each one appreciated seeing them. The state inspector gave us a great report this year, with no issues. Our swim team coach this year was Jennifer Schultz. She jumped right into the fire and hosted four swim meets. And if you've never been to a meet, oh, please try to get to one next year. What a fun time, and you can't even move around the pool. There are so many people, they're just really cool. And they buy lots of concession stand stuff. We would not be able to host a swim team without the help of several parents. They show up at every meet and actually smile when they're there. It's really fun, so... Marilyn was very impressed with Kerry Waters, the manager, Brittany Gokenar, our assistant manager, because they balanced the books all the time, and I think we made, you're going to see that we made money this year on that, so... Just a quick rundown of our daily operations. May averaged 160 swimmers a day. June averaged 157 swimmers a day. Average in July was 157. And August, geez, I must've got cold or something, averaged 87 swimmers a day. We had seven pool parties in July, six pool parties in August, and of course, the four swim meets. This is what I like, we sold 157 family season passes. We sold 30 individual passes. Just to let you know, the very first year, we sold 115 family passes, and there was 23 singles, so you can see that's really went up. RC Andrade, is he here tonight? He's our CPO, Certified Pool Operator, and we've had sand problems for about four years now, five years, and he took apart one of the pipes and the filter finally, and it was broke. And like the flange, did I say that right? I'm just a band director. Okay, the flange, flange was broken, so the point was happening was all that silt sand or whatever it's called, the sand was in there. I mean, you can't even hardly get the sand in there, it was coming out of there and into the pool. And that's why we had a lot of sand problems and stuff, so good job RC on that. And the cool part, it was under warranty. Didn't cost us anything, so... There's always a positive in here someplace. We started monthly meetings in January, like we did last year, the third Wednesday of each month, and we meet in the city council rooms, room at 6:30. At this point, I will remain as president, Dan Kors will be vice president, and Jamie Lapke will be the secretary with Mary Michael, Tyler Hinkle, and Tammy Hinkle as board members, and that makes our three males, three females. We did good. Marilyn Espinbalar, is she here? She's been, she helped us write a grant to, Marilyn Espinbalar has been helping us with grants, and we were informed that there were many requests this year for the Harrison County Community Foundation Grant Program. So we were turned down at this point, but we will ask again next year on the next round. We were asking for $2,000 for new lounge chairs, and that's around the pool, those white ones, that break when I sit on them. And that's about the only, we looked at everywhere, we looked, how many catalogs in there, everybody went back to that same one, so... Anyhow, they're about $100 apiece, we'd like to get 20 more, so... Just in closing, one of the reasons the pool ran so smooth this year was the attitude of the managers and lifeguards and their great work ethic. Oh my gosh, that's so neat. They wanted to come to work. They volunteered to work for pool parties, and everyone just got along together, which made for a positive working environment for everyone. This is also due to the positive attitude of the pool board. And I introduced a few of them. One example is that the pool board gave them an end of the year party. This is really cool. We asked them where they wanted the party to happen, and they said, "At the pool." What a great thing to have a party where you work. That made us feel really good. That was my report, just a real quick one there, so... Sorry, I was so excited. Many microphones, you know.
Mr. Darling?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
At the end of the year, a lot of times, we run into problems with lifeguards not wanting to stay. Was that better this year? It seemed like the pool was open most of the time I went by and...
We never, Kerry, did we ever have a time when there was, got down to the last week maybe, or?
There were, there was Friday night, we didn't open, the last Friday night, we were supposed to open because we didn't have enough guards. I think we only had three closed rain days.
Yeah.
But it didn't rain, so...
So just one closure because of no guards? And pre-reduced, okay?
Yeah, I think we had a closure one night because of electricity.
Yeah.
Early on, yeah. Yeah, they were just, we went to school, when did we go to school? Probably in January, February, recruited all the board members, all at school, and they were in a homerun, and did a lot of talking, and we sat positively, good, boy, it turned out, you know, it was, I didn't, 19 lifeguards? 18 lifeguards, 18 lifeguards. But everybody's got their own wild schedules.
Any idea of how many of those we're planning to return?
Yeah, there's...
And we had a lot of new ones.
There's, I think there's only, what, we kind of needed three or four that graduated or maybe not come back, but the rest of them want to come back. Yeah, that was, yeah, that was a really good part, too, yeah. So we just have to get recertified, and what we always do is, is every year, we're on that 90-day, if you work less than 90 days, then we have to rehire you again next year. And so we'll have them reapply again in January if we're...
Anybody else have any questions?
You bet, thanks.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you to a lot of people here. First off, Ray, for your leadership as president, and then the rest of the board, Dan, and Jamie, and Mary, and Tyler, and Tammy. We appreciate all the work and time and effort. You know, the state inspector gave us a good report with no issues, that's always exciting. You know, Kerry Waters, I know Kerry's here, thank you for managing, and Brittany Gokenar for assisting manager. Balanced the book every night, so I think that's kudos, and I know Marilyn appreciated that. Jennifer Schultz for stepping up and being the swim team coach, which is exciting. RC fixing something that's been broke probably since the pool was new, so thanks for, thanks for your efforts as well, too. And last but not least, Mary Lynn, thank you for your help with the grants, and hopefully next year, we will get that $2,000 grant and get some more of those white, those white chairs that Ray likes to lounge in, in town, and so... And then the 18 lifeguards, thanks goes out to them, too. So I think this is a win-win, and it's just a great community attraction, it's a community benefit and a value to our city. And with all of these people that I just mentioned, because of all of you, it is what it is today, so a big thank you.
Mike, I'd also ask for finances, and just so that you all know, when we first were building the pool, we were told that you should expect to never make money on a pool, which everybody knows that. And the basic theme was that if you can get lucky enough to make enough money to pay for everything but your salaries, you're doing really good. And our revenue this year was $52,000, and our expenses were only $40,000. So we actually had a good year. That just helps with, or 93, but that includes the salaries, sorry. If you take the salaries out, it was $45,000, so we actually made $7,000, sorry. But it just goes to show that things are going good with the pool right now. A new pool helps that out definitely, because we don't have as many expenses, but hopefully we can keep that going and keep a pool for a really long time, so... Any other questions? That took care of agenda item nine and 11. Agenda item number 10, was appointing Mayor Potem. Due to Mike's longevity on city council and his past years as mayor, I decided to switch and ask him to be my Mayor Potem for the remainder of my term, which will be one year, one month, and about 25 days. So, and Mike asked if he would accept that, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So he'll be our new Mayor Potem. Okay, agenda item number 12, update on 28E agreements. Mike, you'd asked for this. Did some checking, we've got several of them out there, we've got four of them that we're actually paying for that I could find. We have the Harrison County Humane Society, the Harrison County Development Corp., the Logan Fire and Rescue, and the landfill. I did check the numbers, I, when I had all the paperwork out, I didn't make copies, I should have for everybody, if you want, I'll get them again. All the numbers are correct. One of these has been in existence since 1989, and the price has never changed, so that was nice to know. Logan Fire and Rescue is based on our yearly property tax valuation. They get 60.7 cents per thousand on that, is how we pay that. The landfill assesses as a yearly fee, which I believe is around $32,000 or $35,000, and so that is just split out between all the homes that have water service and those, that service, that amount is billed on each water bill, so...
Randy, doesn't that change as well with the census figures?
Correct. We, our price went up a little bit due to a raise in census, but that's how that's collected and then distributed back out, is they have, they have four different loans that they base this on, and they need so much money from each citizen to pay for that, and so that's how that's figured. And we get that figure usually in February of every year. Last year, they did not change. This year, hopefully, we might be able to go down a little bit, we're thinking out there at the landfill, so... And then the Harrison County Humane Society was our newest one, which we approved earlier this year, and that is based on our census also. They figured how much it would take to cover Logan, and that's how that was figured also, so...
Now, do they have a agreement, do we approve them each year on a certain date or on their anniversary?
They're all written to just proceed as reg, as self-regulately, correct, at the end of the year, unless we wanted to make a change or whatever, then we usually have a 30 or 60-day notice we need to give that we'd be backing out. A couple of them would be very expensive to back out of. The Harrison County landfill would cost us about $500,000 right now if we were to back out of that one. I'm not sure what the fire and rescue one is, I didn't read the whole 2080 agreement, I was just trying to find the amount that we pay. And then a couple of the other ones would just be a notice that you have to give 60 or 90 days, 30 days out, that you wanted to withdraw from those 2080 agreements, so...
Can you tell us to give how much of those, each of those were? Did you have?
I forgot to write it down, too. I was checking the numbers to make sure if they were right, I will get those and give you all an update, so that you, I'll have that for the next meeting for you, so... Anything else you'd like while I've got those out? Okay, Agenda Item Number 13, this is approved, the renewal of a Class C liquor outdoor service and Sunday sales permit for the Fourth Avenue Grill. And Marilyn, I believe we have everything in order, correct? We received the notes from the state that we're going to go?
When?
Pardon me?
When?
This would be their annual renewal, Fourth Avenue Grill. I believe their license runs out in about 40 days. They actually got right on the ball as soon as they got their notice and, and submitted it, so that they, so they could have that. The state approved it, so we figured we'd just look it on the agenda and get it taken care of.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class C liquor outdoor service and Sunday sales before that in the grill. I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I got a question. What's outdoor service?
They have.
For the Fourth?
Yeah, like for the Fourth of July, rather than come back later and renew it again. But each time they have an outdoor service, they do have to contact Chief Smith to let him know that they're having it, well, they have to actually come through the city council also. But they don't have to go back to the state to get another license. You can buy a single-use permit, or you can buy one for the year, and they've just decided to do it for the year, and then if they have anything, they would come to the council and say they want to have it, and show the Chief Smith the beer garden that they had proposed, and they would get okay, so. Any other questions?
Seven.
Yes, good. Okay, motion in a second, Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
Agenda Item Number 13, approval of a renewal of Class C liquor license and outdoor service and Sunday sales before the Avenue Grill is approved. Agenda Item Number 14, this was brought up a few weeks ago, well, actually, it's been brought up several times this year, discuss and approve airing of city council meetings on the local access channel. Last time we were here, I know that we weren't sure what all we could do and what we couldn't do. I did check in our ordinances, and under cable television regulations, 113.39, the grantee will provide at no cost to the city a public access channel with full capacity to broadcast over the system. The grantee will provide at no cost to the city as part of the head-end building, the tower site, a protected and designated area for modulator and couplings to enable any organization approved by the city to broadcast over the network through the use of video playback equipment. The head-end building will contain a proper modulator and couplings to enable such broadcasts to be made through use of the video playback equipment. We had earlier this year discussed whether we would just do it as a playback, or we talked about possibly going to live streaming or council meetings or whatever. According to our ordinances, we can't go live streaming right now, we would have to change that, but we are allowed to have these if we would like to as playbacks, so.
Did we ever get any bids for doing that? Those that were approached, did we put anything out formally?
We haven't put anything formally out.
In the form that you did.
Yeah. Mr. Darling has said that we could use his.
Yeah, I'd be glad to just give you the DVD.
DVD right now. I mean, I think that we need to go out and, Ray shouldn't have to be here every night if he doesn't want to, he says he enjoys it, but.
I do? I'm strange.
For the time being, you know, we can, we can put that in the paper and see if anybody actually wants to do it, so.
Are you doing it ourselves, or production?
I haven't, I'm not technical on that stuff, so it wouldn't do me any good to look at it.
And that would really be, do you have any other need for any of that equipment?
I wouldn't think so.
You know, if you really drop that, I don't think there's any other, maybe even a board meeting or a pool board. Okay, thanks.
So I don't know if you want to continue discussing that tonight and approve it, or do we want to just go out for bits first? I'm not sure if we'd get any bits, I don't, you know, I would think there would be some people out there that would want to use.
Can we just start off and try and see how it works, and, and the generosity of Ray and just taking his tape or his, I'm old, the CD, DVD, whatever, 8-track? Plug it in the cartridge in my car and hold it to take off, no, put it on the, put on local access channel. I'd be forward approving it tonight, testing it with Ray's, you know, generosity.
Takes me about two days to make a DVD and then I edit it out and stuff, so.
So, forward.
So our discussion, are we going to be specific about when and how often? Is this something that, another duty that Marilyn's going to have to do from, because the equipment's it here and the, we'd have to put in, or is it something we could just cycle like we do the, the other items that are on the access channel?
Yeah, the equipment's here in this building, so all we would need to do is receive the, the tape, we would need to figure out when we want to air it, if we want it to be early afternoon, mid-afternoon, and I'm sure that we could get volunteers to come in and, and run it, probably, hopefully we could, otherwise, I can come in, I'm usually in town, and, you know, just come in and get it started, and that's all it really takes, I, I believe. I've never actually run it, but.
That's a good point. I think we need to think about how often and are there going to be reruns, and, and do we get reruns?
On Marilyn's issue, for the next meeting, I'll try to come up with a schedule, I'll talk to some people to see when people are home, what the best afternoon might be to air those. I know that the churches used to do theirs on Wednesday afternoon, they're no longer doing them, so I don't know if that was just a good day for everybody.
And it looks like we've got a couple-day lead time we'd need anyway.
Right.
Maybe the next Monday as well, since we can do them on the off days we're not here, the off Mondays. Those are just my ideas.
I don't know. I'll try to come up with a schedule and see if I can talk to some people, see what times they're going to watch it, so. Then we'll approve that for the next meeting. Agenda Item Number 15, it's approved bid from Doug Johnson Construction, Johnson Construction to repair the bridge at 250th Street and Wester Drive. This is something that we had budgeted for, and he's given us a bid. It's actually probably low enough, I wouldn't have to put it on the agenda, but I didn't have time to look it up and do anything, so his bid is $3,184. We don't have to go out to competitive bids, I know, for that, but since we were close to the meeting, I just decided to put it on here and we'll just formally approve it, so.
Do you know any other details about how long that's going to be out, or how long it'll take?
One day.
There he is.
One day, Scott?
Yeah, when he was, when he was, I'm at Mexico City, so when he hit the other side, scored out in the morning, poured in the afternoon, opened it up three to four hours later. But it'll only be half, it'll still be one lane open.
Only doesn't ever take more than.
He did the other side about five or six years ago now, I mean, you see the north side, it's pretty, we have people going into the other lane to get around it, so it needs to be done. So maybe he blocks off overnight, depending on, they get it done all the way to the station, maybe in one day.
So can he get on it pretty quick, for the weather that's bad, get it done? Do we have an aid, or?
We're going to talk about last meeting, so we're two weeks later now, but I'll talk to him tomorrow and see what he can get on it. Like I said, hopefully he can do it.
Let's just go ahead and make a motion and approve it, just since we got it on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Doug Johnson Construction for repairing the bridge at 250th Street and Wester Drive.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
Doug Johnson's construction bid has been approved. Agenda Item Number 16 is chamber update. Hadn't seen anyone from the chamber, so I'm not sure if they even had an update. Agenda Item Number 17, citizens' questions and comments. No questions or comments? Agenda Item Number 18, deputy clerks' report.
The financial report, Mike, you'd asked about all the reports, if they're finished. It has to be published, it will be published in this week's paper, and then will be mailed to the state auditor after it's published, so that is, and then the street road use will have to go online and, and submit, so, and they will be complete, okay? Scott has asked, Bonzel TV has plans to replace two of our high-band radios at the water tower and the water plant. This has to be done by January 1st of 13, and I think he's going to tell us more about it.
We have three high-band radios, one at the water plant, one at the tower, and one at the well field that sends the information on all my levels and tells the wells when to kick on and turn off and things like that. So we'll have to be, the high bands have to be narrow, what they call narrow-banded, by January 1st. And we got in with the county and fire department, we did all their mobiles, their Motorolas, but what I have, these plants are Kenwood, and that's what Bonzel does. The radio at the water tower was replaced about a year and a half ago, so they can just be reprogrammed, but the one at the water tower and water plant are, were put in when they were rehabbed back in the late 80s, early 90s, so those have to be replaced. So I'll have to have two new radios there and then be narrow-banded. You're supposed to be giving me a prize, but we're going to have to do it, because if we don't have it done by January 1st, we're subject to a $16,000 a day fine, and may not have any service. So, I'll have to, he's supposed to pass a surprise and give it back, but I'm going to have him go ahead and get it going on, and send you to give him a surprise.
Do you have any idea?
I believe that radio out at the, at the well field was around four and a half, $500, maybe looking at a thousand, $1,200 a radio in labor, so 500, 600 at the most, maybe, I'll guess in the, right now.
That one will be low enough, we probably just have to do it right away without council approval, so. Anything else? Something you want for the next meeting?
What's that?
Agenda items for the next meeting?
Yes. I just got a couple of thoughts here. One is, you know, I'd like to see some top priority given to the following items, and I guess I'd propose that maybe a standing agenda items until resolved, how best we can do that. One would be hire a city clerk. Two would be hire a third police officer. Three, although we've made great progress, you know, just the city operations, running the day-to-day employee decisions, funding reports from the fed and state requirements, just an update, every meeting, where are we at with that, and are we okay, and what resources do we need? Number four would be nuisance abatements, keep the pressure, keep the, keep it, keep it working for us. And number five would be board committees, until we have all appointed and active memberships. That includes Board of Adjustments, Planning and Zoning, Board of Appeals, Pool Board, Park Board, and CD, BG, Housing. I can give you my notes here, so you don't have to take them. And then a couple of other comments, and then one, just because I just thought of this, there's some old business, I know that we vacated streets and, and country land estates. Did we ever finalize those transactions? Did we ever get paid, you know, for that, including the legal and other fees? I don't know. Okay, okay. So, that's it.
Does anybody else have anything for the next agenda? Right now? You can just let Marilyn know, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second, Councilmember LeFever.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch.
Aye.
And Councilmember Crown.
Aye.
Next meeting is adjourned, thank you.